Sitting in tonight as the DCS. With respect to the waiver for the gas-powered leaf blower ban, when it's my understanding, and I don't know, I may have misread the process. My understanding right now is that when a waiver is submitted, it is considered denied unless someone hears back from the Department of Community Services. Is that correct?
And if a council member wants to comment, they're welcome to, but I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Doy. I'll try that first. The when a waiver is submit, when a waiver exemption is submitted, it goes to the Department of Community Services and they will be contacted by the director.
It will, okay, because I thought I read that the language indicated that if it had been 10 days, no one had heard from DCS, then it would be, then the waiver submission would be considered denied. I believe that's what I read. Could be wrong.
I believe that there is, that after 10 days that the, it would be considered denied, but that the Department of Community Services is contacting people within 10 days.
Thank you.
And just to confirm, yes, we have received, I think, three so far, and they've been responded to promptly.
Thank you. I appreciate Mr. Doy.
Thank you, Mr. Alaco. And then we have one other hand raised, Delia Hamlet. If you could promote Ms. Hamlet, Madam Clerk. Okay, go ahead. I think you're muted, Ms. Hamlet.
Okay, sorry about that. Thank you for your time tonight, Mrs. Little and council member. I just wanted to see if there was an update regarding the next meeting, which obviously will be in person, if we have had any information around members of our community being able to join via Zoom.
I believe that that request was being considered. It was being evaluated by our city attorneys and by our admin committee on council. So I don't know if Mr. Jacoby or if Councilmember Naidu have any updates, but they've been looking into that.
May I ask, is that something that our technology team is involved in? Because I heard that there could be some technology challenges and was hoping we were engaging with them for that reason, I guess.
I would like to allow Councilmember Naidu to update you, and he will answer your question.
Thank you, Council President Protem. Ms. Hamlet, just to give you some back to health also, because I know others in the community have raised this about having the Zoom meetings. So when we started contemplating having, going back in live in session, we had meetings in the administrative committee. That's myself, Councilwoman Allen, the city administrator, the city clerk, the city attorney, the director of community services, and council president Fox. And we met both in person as well as via Zoom to discuss both the physical and electronic means of holding a meeting. And I think we should all step back and recognize that council meetings are really business meetings, right? Because we have to follow certain legal requirements, and if we don't follow them, we open ourselves to potential legal challenges to our decisions. And so we have an obligation to reduce the risk associated with the procedures that we follow that can be challenged. And so this way, we don't expend tax dollars in either legal counsel or litigation associated when it's not necessary. So we looked into this, and the unanimous recommendation of the group was that we should return to in-session live meetings. And we concluded that June 1st made the most sense because council would be returning at the same time. The city staff would be returning back to meeting with the public. And so we thought that if the city staff was returning back in public to meet with the public, council should be no different. Then the question came up about whether or not to do a hybrid model, which is what some folks are proposing. And we looked at different options in different communities. And frankly, our city clerk, our city attorney, looking at different models and looking at the challenges that were associated with it. And there is, there's, as you can see in tonight's meeting itself, and this happened even in last week's last meeting. We've had a number of challenges associated with trying to go ahead and have both folks on Zoom as well as being able to communicate with them. Tonight, we don't have people on YouTube being able to see it. But frankly, the fact of the matter is, what would happen if we had to have both live and Zoom? Is that if people were not able to participate during their Zoom portion, because we gave them the option of being able to come on Zoom and not show up in live, because they could not be heard, or we wouldn't know they couldn't be heard, or whether we didn't know that their comments were not taken when we thought that we had finished with comments, we would end up being in a situation that we could face people saying, hey, redo that vote because you didn't take my public comment. For instance, tonight, we'll have an ordinance hearing. Ordinances require a public hearing. That's part of the legal process of it. And therefore, that's what's required for us to make sure that we get everybody heard. I understand.
Can I jump in real quick?
Ms. Hamlet, may I finish, please?
Yep.
I understand the concern about transparency and people being involved. I understand where people are coming from. So I'll give some background on that, right? From my own personal perspective, I've been on council for six years. When I started council, one of the first things we did was to change back. We used to have public comments at the very end of meetings. I don't know if you remember this. When we had comments, public comments, the entire business of the city would go through, and then public comments would be the end. I, when I got on, I was insistent that we should have comments. So this way, folks get on early in the evening, and they can go through the rest of their evening. If they've got kids, they've got things to do. They don't have to stay on if they don't care. So that's one thing. Second thing, when I became council president, I started council, the preview that you get in plain English before every council meeting to know about what is going on. Before, folks would look at just simply the agenda and look through the packet and all that legalese. And we broke it down. So this way, people, and I'm very glad that council president Fox continued that. We used to do something called council on the road. We used to go, a couple of us would go. For one year, we tried, and very few people showed up. And so I understand the idea of making sure we're engaged with the public. That's not lost on me. I also appreciate the idea that when we have issues going on in this community, people do show up. We had, when we had as far as the forest lots, and there was going to be a garage picked up, put up there, people showed up. It was filled the council chambers. This was 2015, before I even became on council. People would fill up the council chambers.
I understand.
I appreciate that people, I appreciate the need for people.
I feel like you're pontificating, and I'm trying to make a point. I appreciate your time, but.
Ms. Hamlet, Ms. Hamlet, I'm going to break in here. This, the purpose of public comments is to make a comment and ask questions of council, and then we.
But he's pontificating. He won't let anybody.
I'm trying to explain something to you. That's how this works. We offer a period of time at the beginning of our business meeting for the public to make a comment or to ask a question, and the council responds. It's not the appropriate forum for a debate or a back-and-forth discussion. We have lots of means for doing that. All of us are available by email, by phone. If you'd like to set up a meeting with any of us, we could do that and discuss this further. But this isn't the right forum to do a back-and-forth or debate on this.
And Ms. Hamlet, I'm not just trying to pontificate. What I'm trying to do is because I think there's, there's other people besides yourself that are listening to my answer. And I want to make sure people understand the context within what I'm saying, that we are concerned about transparency and openness, but we also have to deal a legal meeting that is practical and feasible within the technology that we have. And what I'm trying to explain to not just you, but everybody else, that while we're concerned about these issues, we're trying to balance a bunch of things. So this way, we get through a business meeting without exposing the city to risk. That's what I'm trying to explain.
If I could just say one quick thing. My issue is just, I think the issues are with YouTube and not Zoom. I think the Zoom is working well. The YouTube seems to be what's failing, and I think that's my biggest issue. That's all I would like to say.
Thank you.
Seems to be working really well. The YouTube is having issues. But I will say that it's really hard for residents to access the Zoom link. Like tonight, I was five minutes late because it should be on the city's website. Click the Zoom link. You have to go into the PDF. It's very hard, especially for someone who's not computer literate, to go into the Zoom link. That's all I have to say. And thank you for your time. I certainly appreciate all your efforts. I just, it is really hard to get the Zoom link. If you're not computer literate, it's really hard.
And actually, you just made our point as to why it would make sense for all of us to return back, meet in person. And I'll tell you one thing, and I know you may think that I'm going on and on, but I'll say one thing. When we've had people come in, a lot of times, people sit in our council meetings, sometimes make a comment, sometimes they don't. And but at the end of a council meeting, when we're physically together, lots of times, people pull one of us to the side or one of the city staff, and they get some of their questions answered or get some of the issues addressed. And we have a more fulsome discussion. We're trying to return back to normal. That's what we do.
I agree, but there's a lot of people who can't go to those meetings, Mr. Naidu, and that's who I'm trying to speak about. Those people who are at lacrosse games and soccer games, they just can't go. It is the reality of our lives.
Thank you for comments. Okay, and looks like we have one more person with a hand raised, Ryan Filmet.
Hi, good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
All right, great. Ryan Filmet, 57, Madison Ave. Good evening, council and mayor. I just had a couple of comments. And on the back of that last, on that last exchange with council member Naidu, I just wanted, from my personal experience, have joining, been joining the meetings now for probably close to a year straight. I really appreciate, well, it's been made long, but appreciate the Zoom access and the ability to get on. I often work before and after the meetings. I have a two-year-old and a three-year-old, and I often have to put them to bed either before I speak or after. And also, often during the meetings, things come up where I don't know if I'm going to speak or not. And based on what I hear from you guys, that's what kind of tilts one way or the other. I look forward to coming in person. And if I have to bring my three-year-old with me, I will. But I really do think that there is a very strong case to try to make this happen. I think that that is a very futuristic way of looking at how things are probably going to work either way. But I appreciate all the efforts and the background and everything. And I've heard about the meeting minute, or sorry, the public comments moving from the back to the front of the meeting. I appreciate all that. So anyways, my other comment was just, this might be for the mayor, on in terms of the recent, coming down from the governor, the pandemic-related restrictions that have been lifted, scheduled to be lifted in the coming days. I know certain outdoor activities regarding masks indoors, not so much compared to relative states. I just wanted to get a view from the city of Summit here, how we are communicating with the state, what we're seeing, and how do we look at the, like, from what I understand, outdoor masks are not required as of tomorrow. I could be wrong. But maybe you can help explain it, put it in perspective. And things such as the farmer's market and some of the outdoor public events or gathering spaces. How will we be managing those? Do we have a timeline? Do we have a timeframe? And I'm just curious to, not curious, very interested as I see people around town. And it's kind of a mixed bag right now as people try to take in what they're hearing from the CDC and from the state. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Filmet. I believe, I'll let the mayor answer and see if she has anything to add. But from the very beginning of the pandemic, one of the first orders that the governor signed was that the individual municipalities couldn't make their own restrictions or take their own path in, you know, taking measures against the pandemic, that the governor's orders were going to override the individual municipalities. So we've been taking all of our cues from the governor and following all the executive orders. And then we've also been taking, you know, advice from our, our public health officers in the Westfield Regional Health Office. So, you know, I think that any guidance that, we are, we are following the guidance of the public health officers and the governor, and that's what the city is going to be doing. But I'll see if the mayor has anything to add to that.
Thank you, Council President Protem. No, I don't have anything particularly to add to that. But, you know, not wearing masks outside is very new, just yesterday. So we are thinking about it. I mean, Adam Murkey was coming down from the governor's office, frankly, because he says things, or the governor's executive order says, no masks outside except if they're in a crowd. Now, now, what's a crowd? And, and I, if people are, want to wear a mask, they certainly can. But we have to think about, do we mandate them? I said tonight earlier, if you heard me during the Memorial Day parade, I said masks are required because that's what we had decided two weeks ago, when we decided we wanted to go ahead with the parade. But, and the governor hadn't said no masks are necessary outside yet. So frankly, it's all very much in flux. I'm in communication with the governor's office, as Councilwoman Little said, as well as the Health Department. We are following their lead. But we do need sometimes a little more clarification from them as to what, what the executive orders actually entail. So we're working on it. Do we have a hard and fast timeline or schedule for people? No, not yet. But we're working on it. And when we get information, when we make decisions, when we have ideas or guidance that's clear, it'll be on the city's website, and we'll certainly put it out through all of our normal communication channels.
Thank you, mayor. I don't see any other hands raised for public comments. So at this time, we will close public comments. Or do you email comments?
Madam President, I do have two emails that were received today.
Oh, thank you.
If I may. The first one came from Mr. and Mrs. Bruce Chambrault of Woodbridge Road. Dear City Council, Marilyn and I support the banning of gas-powered leaf blowers. Not only is this beneficial to the residents of Summit, but also for the lawn care workers. The second comment came from Rachel Simon. She writes, as a follow-up to the May 4th meeting, I am reaching out for additional information on the legality of ceasing to stream the meetings via Zoom and disallowing public comment via email, beginning with the June 1st meeting. Ms. Fox commented that once the state of emergency is lifted, there is no option for a hybrid meeting. I took a look at the Open Public Meetings Act here, and she refers to something below, and meeting is defined as follows. Meeting, in quotes, means and includes any gathering, whether corporeal or by means of communication equipment, which is attended by or open to all of the members of a public body held with the intent on the part of the members of the body present to discuss or act as a unit upon the specific public business of that body. Meeting does not mean or include any such gathering. Number one, attended by less than an effective majority of the meeting of the public, the members of a public body. Or number two, attended by or open to the, all the members of three or more similar public bodies at a convention or similar gathering. The members of three or more similar public bodies at a convention are similar. It's repeated. If there is a law in place restricting access to council meetings and comment for in-person only, can you please share that? There might be a precedent of holding meetings in-person only, but if there is no law against a hybrid model, I hope that the council would be interested in evolving their approach to create a more inclusive environment. Ms. Fox also remarked during the last meeting that they've tried to do this, and they are difficult to run. I'd comment that something being difficult is not a reason to consider it. Thank you for your consideration of this topic. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We've already discussed the, the hybrid, the ability of to do hybrid meetings at Summit. I don't know if Attorney Jacoby has anything to add.
I think it's important to remember that prior to March, I think it was 19th of 2020 last year, there was no such thing as hybrid meetings or Zoom meetings. That wasn't permitted. They were open public meetings open to the public. And what happened because of the pandemic and the shutdown so that business could run, the Department of Community Affairs Local Government Services issued a local finance notice, an LFN, which permitted Zoom meetings to occur during a state of an emergency. They're the exception, not the norm. And the moment that the pandemic executive orders are lifted, you're not going to be permitted to have Zoom or hybrid meetings. What the, what the writer was writing about is that governing bodies can permit members of the governing body to participate remotely, unlimited circumstances. I've had cases where you've got a governing body member who's ill, and they participate, and there's rules and guides on how you have to do that. But the general rule is that meetings are supposed to be open to the public at a public body. And frankly, Summit and every municipality in the state of New Jersey have been doing this for hundreds of years, as long as public meetings have been in existence. So we're going back to the norm away from the exception. And so the hybrid format, once the, once the executive orders are lifted, there's not going to be hybrid formats or anything unless there's some new law or regulation that's promulgated by the government. So that's, that's the overall guidance. My guidance is that going back to normal, the normal meetings is the most appropriate form to be conducting meetings.
Thank you, Attorney Jacoby. And I see, I have one more hand raised for public comment, Madam Clerk, Lisa Campbell.
Ready? Just one moment. Go ahead, Ms. Campbell. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, Lisa Campbell, 27, Karen Way. I just basically wanted to make a comment to all the members of council and city staff and for all of the amazing things that you've done for everybody in the city. I know that especially, you know, elected officials are, you know, they have families and lives and volunteer lots and lots of their time to these meetings. And, you know, it's difficult sometimes to get to be in person, but I understand the benefit of that. And I also understand the changes that have occurred with this council over the last couple of years, making it easier for members of the public to participate and feel comfortable. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Campbell. Appreciate that. So now I am, I'm not seeing any other hands raised. So I think we'll finish the public comment section of the meeting, and we'll move on to the budget hearing. So Minister Rogers, I can turn the floor over to you or to Councilman Barton, which, who's going to open the budget hearing?
I think.
I believe it should be Councilman.
Yeah.
Councilmember Barton. Okay, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Council President Protem. I'm going to open up the budget hearing, speaking about three things I believe will help guide our discussion. So first, gratitude. Second, two procedural items. And third, what this budget will allow us to do. So thanks are due to many people for their incredibly hard work on this. Sorry. Yes.
President Protem, I think we need a second to open the hearing, and then Mr. Barton can make his comments.
I'm sorry. Do I hear a second for opening the hearing?
I second it.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you, Councilmember Barton.
Oh, no, that's okay.
Keep going with your excellent presentation.
Thank you. Who was I thanking? First, finance, the municipal finance team. So Administrator Michael Rogers, Chief Financial Officer Tammy Baldwin. Next, thank you to the department heads. Thanks are due to our Congressman Tom Malinowski, our Senators Booker and Menendez, the United States Congress, and President Biden for passing the American Rescue Plan. Thank you to my colleagues on the Finance Committee, Mayor Radies, Council President Fox, Councilmember Danny O'Sullivan, and to all of my other colleagues, Councilmembers Allen, Hairston, Little, and Naidu, for all of the time you have spent going over the hundreds of pages in the budget document, asking questions, and for the number of phone calls you've picked up from me saying just one more thing about the budget. So finally, thank you to every member of the public who is here this evening to engage with this process, and to everyone who I believe is now able to also watch on YouTube. So that's good news as well. There are two important procedural items. First, timing. The deadline to complete and pass the budget this year was again extended due to the ongoing health emergency. We decided to take advantage of that extension to better understand federal relief funds and to try and project revenue accurately. Similarly, budgets are usually adopted the same night as having the hearing. But unfortunately, the state of New Jersey's Division of Local Government Services has not yet assigned a reviewer to our budget to then approve of our budget. So while we will have the hearing on this budget right now, we will vote to adopt it not tonight, but hopefully at our June 1st, 2021 meeting. Now, when taxes are paid in Summit, approximately 50% go to the schools, approximately 30% go to the county, and approximately 20% that's left is what this council can use to make the city run. As I have said before, there is no better indication of the values of a government than how it spends money. So here's how we are spending money this year. These goals are listed in the beginning of the budget document. One, operate a safe, responsive, and healthy city government during and after the COVID-19 pandemic. This council has passed dozens of initiatives to keep residents and businesses healthy. Two, Broad Street West redevelopment. We are having a meeting Thursday night to update the public on this important process. Three, demonstrate fiscal responsibility. Overall, this year, the taxes in Summit will decrease, and we will maintain our AAA bond rating. Four, expand the application of technology to create business opportunity and increase customer convenience. We now have an easier online platform to purchase permits, and the DRO is now online and keyword searchable. Five, maintain and upgrade critical city assets and infrastructure. We have a new firehouse project currently out to bid, and we have more sidewalks on the way. Six, build community connectedness and expand communications effort. We have an entirely new COVID platform on the city website, and that is going well. Seven, leverage talent, ideas, and creativity of city's municipal workforce. We have, again, this year, expanded shared services. Eight, offer innovative solutions to ongoing municipal problems. We have a new partnership on the way in the realm of public safety, and a new platform for volunteer applications is also on the way. Nine, retain and re-initiate improved customer service and accessibility. We have a new public records project, and that will help in the Oprah process for our city clerk's office. As you can see, through the last year of the worst global pandemic in 100 years, significant progress has been made toward each of these goals. But of course, there is more work to do. Approving this budget sends a clear statement to the people of Summit that we can have extremely high-quality government and be responsible with finances at the same time. And for that reason, when we do get to vote on it, I hope you will join me in enthusiastically supporting this budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Barton. Do we have any comments from members of council? I see Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President Protem. And thank you, Councilman Barton, for concisely summarizing the priorities and goals that this budget puts forward. I hope everyone had a chance to watch the April 20th council meeting to see the budget presentation that was given by our city administrator, Michael Rogers. Like every other year, a tremendous amount of work goes into the budget. So I want to thank our city administrator, Michael Rogers, our CFO, Tammy Baldwin, and her team, and all of our department heads for getting us to this point. The budget work is constant, but really ramps up in the fall and winter to where we are now. By Councilman Barton, I also want to thank my fellow Finance Committee members, Mayor Radies, Council President Fox, and of course, Councilman Barton, who is Finance Chair, for their thoughtful questions and ideas all through the process. It is my first year on the Finance Committee, and until you're in those meetings, it's hard to grasp the amount. it's hard to grasp the amount of work our city professionals and city volunteers do to constantly find ways to save money and at the same time to grow the pie and grow investment in this town in a smart and sensible way. The budgeting process is a constant give and take to make sure we provide the services that people expect, which helps sustain and increase our property values. It is our duty to spend every dollar wisely and responsibly on behalf of our taxpayers. And I think we've done that. And so I'm really proud that the municipal budget is a 1.05% increase over last year and the all-in tax bill for Summit residents will show a decrease this year. And with that, I hope we all enthusiastically support this budget when we have a chance to vote on it. Thank you, Council President Pro Tem.
Are there any other comments from members of council? Councilmember Naidu.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. I want to join Councilman O'Sullivan and Barton in thanking the Finance Committee, the city staff. I'm not going to go through the entire litany of folks, but I also want to give a shout out to you and to Aaron Schreger and the Department of Community Services because part of the budget is not only the operating budget that the Finance Committee looks at, but also the capital budget that the CAP Committee, which you, Madam President Pro Tem Chair, and this is actually the smallest, I believe, the CAP budget, the capital expenditures budget that we've had a number of years, frankly, as long as I've been on council, I think this has been the smallest one that we've had. And certainly, it's been a very, very trying time to try to figure out because as folks know, and as Councilman O'Sullivan said, the budget process starts really in the August of the previous year. A lot of meetings happen by city staff behind the scenes in August. We get to a capital projects discussion in, in December of last year. And then, of course, the budget throughout all of 2021, the, the winter of 2021, where the, both the finance and the capital projects committee looks at. And so there's a lot of work behind the scenes. I do have a question and I don't know if this is the time to ask it or whether we should wait for public comments and then ask questions thereafter, but I'll ask my question and, and it's to the city administrator and he can decide to wait or, or or answer it right now if that's appropriate. And that is with regard to pensions. I noticed that in our budget, we have approximately a 10% increase in pensions. And I was wondering if the city administrator, because that number is, is higher than some of the other increases that we see in the budget, if the city administrator can explain the reason for that, that percentage increase. So I'll leave it at that and wait for either a comment later on or now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Naidu. Are there any other comments from members of council? Yes, Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. I don't want to sound like a broken record, but we all know that 2020 was just a remarkable year of challenges and difficulty. And I really want to take my hat off to our Police Chief, Chief Barlatti and Chief Eric Evers, who bared a very heavy responsibility in managing our Office of Emergency Management along with the mayor, along with Michael Rogers, and did a phenomenal job in helping us secure grant dollars and really going through that FEMA process. It, it, it needs to be lifted up and I want to thank them for really showing up for this city in a strong way and contributing to that tax decrease that Councilman Barton and Councilman, Councilman O'Sullivan talked about. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Councilmember Hairston. Anyone else? Yes, Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Council, Council President Pro Tem. I just wanted to say, I, there's nothing more, much more that I can say other than this. As a newcomer to this group and looking at this gigantic binder, you do not have an appreciation for the amount, amount of work that it takes to run the city and the dedication it has taken with the council and all the members of City Hall that have done an extraordinary job over this last year. So I just wanted to say thank you. It took me some time to really read through and at one point I said, who wrote this? Because it was just very, there's so much to learn and know about the, the city and you guys have done a great job to close the gap on the revenue shortfalls this year. So I just wanted to put it out there.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. And I'll just add some my own brief comments before we take comments from the public. Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Radies. Go ahead.
That's okay. Very quickly, of course, just have to add my thanks. I've watched, I've been in City Hall a lot in the past year. And I've watched everyone work so tirelessly to squeeze any, every penny out of what we do have in taxes and, and watch with great relief the money that we receive from the federal government. So I want to thank Michael, Tammy, everybody, all department heads, Mark, Aaron, Rosie, and of course, the chiefs. You guys are amazing and we are all very lucky to have you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, I'll just add my comments briefly. As the former chair of the Finance Committee, I am well aware of the work that goes into this budget in a normal year. I cannot imagine the process that you all went through this year with all the complications with the pandemic and the challenges of trying to do this in a, you know, remotely and to come out to a budget that is an actual decrease to the residents of Summit while maintaining the high levels of services that we have all come to expect is just, is nothing short of remarkable. I cannot be overstated what an achievement this is. And so all of us owe you an enormous set of thanks, especially to Tammy and Michael and to all the members of the Finance Committee. I, it really can't be overstated how remarkable this is and we really appreciate it. So now we'll look and see if there are any comments from the public. Yes, Andy Minigar.
Hi, thank you, Andy Minigar, 15 Edgar Street. I appreciate your time tonight. I have a couple of questions about the, the proposed 2021 budget. First is near the beginning of the document in the goal section. So I have a couple of questions about the goals. Under goal four, expanding the application of technology, it mentions the development of an electric vehicle purchasing policy and a plan for the municipal transportation fleet. My question is which vehicles are included in that purchasing policy or if it's easier, which department's vehicles are included in the municipal transportation fleet? And did you want me to ask all my questions now or should I wait for, because I do have a couple more after this?
It might be easier to take them as they come up. City Administrator Rogers, would you like?
Sure. I'll do, first, I'll give a very brief answer because what, what that, part of that goal, a key action of part of that goal is to actually develop it, develop the, the EV fleet policy. And we're going to evaluate our entire fleet. As more and more manufacturers actually develop EVs, it will, it's more of a planning document. So I think what I'll ask our respective CAP Committee this year and, and probably more, it's a combination of that and parking. But, but wherever there are vehicles and that pretty much spans the entire city organization, we're just going to develop the policy and we'll, we'll certainly look at developing best practices around that. And, and it's more of a future document for us to guide us in purchasing. And it will become easier to actually purchase these vehicles as more and more manufacturers develop EVs.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Go ahead, Mr. Minigar.
Okay, so under that, that same goal, goal number four, it mentions the energy aggregation idea. Has the city talked with any neighboring municipalities about a collaboration with Summit on that?
So we are working with, we'll certainly have more conversations, but our Environmental Commission has been very active on that topic over the last couple of years and we, we hope this year we will, and we have, we have looked at various communities that have done this community energy aggregation. So there's, there's, there's definitely examples to look at. There's, there's statutory procedures to follow. It's, it's a, it's a process that I, it's worth exploring. They've, they've been looking at this for years. Quite frankly, it goes back even when I started in 2015. But the market really will dictate whether it's even worth going out. And I think now we'll, we'll explore that again. I know the Environmental Commission is eager to pursue this and actually implement it. So that, that is definitely a part of our key actions this year.
Go ahead, Mr. Minigar. Do you have another question?
Great, thank you. Yep, and one more. This is further down in the, the document. So on page 98 and it's in the, the document's page 5-1, if that helps. It mentions technology dash other expenses. Could you give me an idea what that line includes?
What, what is it? 5-11?
5, 5-1.
Okay.
It's page 98 in the PDF.
It probably encompasses the various platforms that we have throughout the city organization. Is the amount, I'm just going to quickly pull up because it's within administration. Second. So there's various line items, part of that overall other expense. And the, the total is 247,500. There's one, one line item of 98,000, which is our shared service agreement with Madison Borough, which provides our, our IT consultant. And the other is all the software licenses, Office 365, our GovPilot, our SDL, our admins. I mean, there's various platforms that, as far as subscription fees that we have to pay every year. So that, that's what that comprises of.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Minigar. Does that answer your questions?
It does. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we had, next we have David Fosgate. Go ahead, Mr. Fosgate.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, thank you. Sorry, I don't know what happened there. Thank you, Council President Pro Tem Little. And thank you to the city and staff for your great work this year on this budget. My name is David Fosgate. I live at 32 Laurel Avenue, right here in Summit. I guess seeing as the precedent was set by the preceding speaker, I'll ask my questions in sequence if that's okay. I have two quick questions. And then I guess a request of council as my third observation. The first question, it pertains to the 2020 budget, but has consequences for the 2021 budget. So I hope you'll indulge me and if it's out of scope for this hearing, I respect and appreciate that. But in 2020, we were not able to secure a quarter of a million dollars in CARES Act funds from the county. And my question is, was that because they had none left to give, our reimbursement requests were not appropriate or applicable? Or they chose to divert those funds somewhere else? And did we appeal or push them for the money in any way or were we able to?
So the, the amount you're referring to is, it, it, I guess it's probably somewhere between the 250 range. And, and that actually was a combination of amounts that we sought reimbursement, cost reimbursement. One was the city, which I seem to recall our number was about 164 or something like that. Tammy, please, if you remember it, jump in there. And then there were two other entities that we submitted for, our volunteer EMS organization as well as our joint, the joint dispatch. So it was a combination of cost reimbursement we sought from, and the county was just the, more or less the recipient of this CARES Act that they were distributing. They reached a point where they froze any more reimbursement. And I'm not 100% clear on whether they still had funds, but I think they exhausted what was allocated to them. Will we ever get potentially reimbursed for that? It's possible. Doesn't really have any implications on the 2021 budget, but that was something we did seek and we, we did not get reimbursed yet. But there is still a possibility we may.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I was just, no, I was just assuming that for not getting it in 2020, that would be, you know, money we would have to have drawn from the general fund that year or, you know, for this year, having that sort of consequence, but, but that's okay. My second.
Yeah, Mr. Fosgate, I'll, I'll just say it doesn't because whatever, whatever it would have reimbursed, we, it's, it's really the 2020 budget that those monies, what happens is even if we got reimbursed, those monies would, if what, we didn't spend in that particular line item would, would go into what they call an appropriation reserve. And the, each year, each budget year lives for two years and it's not something we could use in 2020 anyway.
Got it. Fair enough. Thank you. My second question, and I actually appreciate Councilman Naidu for bringing up pensions because it has to do with headcount and salaries and wages for the city this year. It looks like for 2021, we're budgeting for a full-time headcount. It's the highest it's been in the past four years. And we've converted a lot of part-time employees to full-time. So my question is, are part-time employees, when they are so, benefits eligible? Or do they have to meet an hours per week threshold to be offered benefits? I guess what I'm meaning is by converting them to full-time, are we now paying for benefits that we otherwise wouldn't have done so? And for instance, I noticed we converted a part-time employee to full-time and tax collection, where we've been operating for the past few years with just one full-time employee as a tax collector. And it seems like we do a really good job of collecting taxes every year. So I just want to make sure we're trying to achieve productivity gains, you know, as best possible when we're thinking about headcount.
A simple answer is yes. It, it, the full-time number, Mr. Fosgate, may have been one higher, but I can, I, if you look back over the last 10 years, I think the city has done a very good job of reducing its overall total city personnel. I, I seem to recall back in about 10 years ago, it was up as high as 218. Now we're down to 198, yeah, 198. And the, some of, some of the full-time, part-time positions that were converted into full-time, various reasons why. One of which is, you know, one reason where some of the part-times were clearly working beyond their 30 hours or 29 hours, wherever they were. We felt it was in the best interest for the particular office apartment that we, we, we had recognized there was a need for, for hours. The people, some of these part-time employees have been longtime part-time employees. As far as the, I think you were sort of intimating something about benefits. If they're under 30 hours, they don't receive health benefits. There is pension contribution, but that's not always necessarily pension. It could be defined contribution, retirement plan that they would be contributing to depending upon their part-time hours and what they made. But we've done a good job of looking at it. In the tax collection office, this was a decision because of really succession planning. Our tax collector is scheduled to retire this year. That particular part-time employee was working 29 hours a week, splitting her time with another community. The other community was actually looking to hire that person full-time. We made them full-time and they, we have a plan to, there's a succession plan in place there. So that was more of a, a planning maneuver with, that we did. And plus, we wanted to keep this particular individual. So there's various reasons why we do that, but we really do try not to, if we can get away with the part-time status, we, we, we maintain it the best we can. But sometimes it requires based upon the demands and a consistent demand. It's not just a temporary demand. It has to be consistent. It has to be evaluated. I think we've done a good job of, of not filling positions where it made sense not to or reducing it to part-time. So it's kind of worked both ways over the last several years.
Great, thank you. And do I have time, Council President, for one more observation?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, so a couple of council meetings ago, uh, you all passed a resolution to extend our contract with our grant writing consultant, Millennium. Uh, it was set at the time that we hoped they're able to secure additional grant money this year to help us meet our needs and other quote unquote aspirational projects. Uh, seeing as our budget relies on federal funds, you know, due to COVID relief this year and next, and we're getting ready to adopt the second highest municipal tax rate increase in the last five years. I know the other component parts of the taxes are decreasing or holding steady, but the fact remains that our municipal tax rate is going up. You know, I concur again with actually Councilman Naidu, who said at the time that, and I paraphrase, we need to prioritize projects and initiatives to make sure we get the most out of Millennium's time and effort. You know, we can't do everything that every boarding committee in town hopes to do. And for instance, with a simple Google search, I found websites directing municipalities, entities that grant money for public playgrounds, for instance, which I know is a part of this year's capital budget request. So I would, you know, respectfully and humbly ask council as a taxpayer to really work and pledge to authorize grant applications, to seek grants to pay for budgeted appropriations or capital projects first, and exhaust Millennium's time and effort. Their limited time and effort in doing so before we move on to anything else. I think that'll be prudent for, you know, seeking as many outside and non-tax based alternatives as possible, uh, to help us, you know, meet and stay on budget this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fosgate. I'll just note that, um, Millennium has met individually with each of the council committees, um, to discuss what our priorities were for that year, what we, um, anticipate some of our capital expenditures to be, and to discuss any kind of, um, grant opportunities that might be out there. We had a, they've already met with each of the capital committees individually to, to go over that. So we're well on our way to, to maximizing their services this year.
Thank you.
It looks, thank you. Are you finished with your questions?
I'm indeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fosgate. Uh, it looks like their next is Celia Hamlet.
Uh, yes, just real quick, um, I, real quick, I don't even need an answer tonight, but I was looking at the budget and I noticed when I was looking at the library budget of 56 employees, which exceeds, I think, the most department that we have. I think it exceeds the police by five, exceeds the fire department by 20, which doesn't include volunteers. I noticed on line 222, uh, it, it's sort of a very vague miscellaneous category, which I noticed in all of the other, uh, categories doesn't exist. And when I was looking at the receipts within the town, I, I was wondering why, it, there must be a reason why that exists. But again, in line 222, there's an other miscellaneous budget within the library for those 56 employees. Uh, and I was just wondering if anyone could provide some information regarding that. Again, it doesn't happen, need to be tonight, but when I was looking at the budget, that's the one thing that jumped out at me. And, and again, the number of employees also jumped out at me. I'm just not sure we need 56 employees, and maybe we do, but that's, I'm just curious.
Ms. Hamlet, um, thank you for bringing that up. Uh, so we, so the city organization, the budget that you're looking, uh, that we're actually having a public hearing about is, doesn't even encompass the library budget. Uh, the library budget has, um, their, their own board that oversees that, that entity, and they pass their own budget. We're not involved in any of that process to develop their budget. So I can't even speak to what, what is in there, other than that we actually show, um, the library budget because there's a line item that we have, the state requires the municipality to include. And we actually just provide all this information, which I, I don't know of another municipality that, that does, um, to the extent that we do. So, uh, I apologize for not being able to, I, to tell you what's in that line item because I had no part of their making of budget. So it's just, if there's a question.
Explain. I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just confused as far as like why, we have a $2.4 million budget for the library. I just, I'm just, I don't understand it honestly. I was trying to figure.
I would direct you to the library board.
But we have, but are we as taxpayers paying for the library?
You are.
So, but we're spending $2.4 million with 56 employees, and we can't answer where those monies are going? And $32,000 worth of those monies are unaccounted for? I'm sorry, I'm not, it's not you. I'm just, I'm trying to understand this as a citizen looking at the budget.
Okay, Ms. Hamlet, again, please let the, please let people.
Yeah, I know. I, so I think you're, you could certainly question it. Um, I just, we, the, this, this particular body, and I certainly can't answer it, what, what they're, what they're develop, how they're developing. Yeah. Their needs, it's really a question for, it's the library, the city has, the library is its own separate organization.
Is that within, is that every city?
Most cities have libraries, and they are paid through, uh, there is a tax, uh, through, it's what they call a third of a mil of the equalization rate, and that's how they're funded. And some municipalities do it that way. Um, some don't give as much, some, that, but that's the maximum that they can, they're allowed.
Do we have any control over that or no?
Not really. Their board of, their own board, uh, approves their budget. Uh, there's, there's some nuances to the statute about whether they, when they use the monies, whether some of the monies come back to them in a subsequent year. That's a little bit more nuanced. Um, but I, I would just suggest that if you have questions about the library.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, we, we reach out to the executive director, Susan Permahos.
That's fair.
Can answer your questions.
All right. No worries. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from members? Yes. Uh, Ryan Filmet. Madam Clerk, can you promote, um, Ryan Filmet? Madam Clerk, are you able to? There he is. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Filmet.
Um, and, and thank you to, um, as everyone else said before me, to all the parties that put this budget together. And everyone, everything that's gone into it as far as time and, um, and effort. And, um, so I just had, I just had some pretty, I think, simple questions. Um, and, and I'm also kind of going off that budget, budget presentation too, from memory, that, uh, Ms. Rogers gave, um, in April, which was pretty extensive for, that kind of went late into the night there. So apologies if I, uh, misstate something, but just a couple of questions. Um, and I'll do them in order again. One is, how, do we have, what is the amount of government subsidized or CARES Act type funding that is appropriated in the 2021 budget? And it's probably in the 400 pages here, so I apologize if, if that's not available then, or if it's just zero, then.
Just so I understand, you're asking about CARES Act funds appropriated in the 2021 budget. Is that correct?
Yeah, like how much are we relying on in terms of the budget?
Of the CARES Act monies?
CARES Act or other government affiliated, you know, stimulus, you know?
Yeah, so CARES Act zero, um, American Rescue Plan, a million 75,000 this year.
Okay, cool. And then, um, another question was, thank you for that. Is there a, a rainy day surplus fund that the city keeps, um, available? Um, or whatever the technical name for probably the surplus? What is that for this year compared to 2020?
Uh, fund balance, uh, well, the fund balance is actually a little over 9 million that we ended up the end of last year. Uh, we are using 7.6 million this year. Last year was 6.9. Um, years, uh, probably about six years ago, we were up as upwards of six points, uh, 7.6 million. Uh, we, we tried to reduce the usage of that. Uh, we were, uh, down to 6.9, but we had to use an additional 700,000 this year.
So we increased the 2021 budget to account for a 700,000 increase in the rainy day fund?
Correct.
Is there a reason for that?
We needed the revenue.
Do you need, it's so, sorry, to take a step back, what is the benchmark for having a $6.9 million rainy day fund? Is that based off?
It's not. Uh, so what you're thinking, that, there, there's what they call fund balance. And so at the end of every year, you, you wind up with a fund balance. Ours was over $9 million. Uh, it's, it's, it fluctuates depending upon a number of factors. Um, and you can certainly reach out to me and I can, uh, we can talk a little more about it.
Yeah, absolutely.
But this year, what we, what we, what we had available to us was a $9 million. And when we go through this budget, we certainly start on the appropriation side. And then we go through, we look at our non-tax revenue sources, uh, what we can conservatively estimate, uh, and project to, to at least realize this year. And then there's what we have available to us in our fund balance that we use a large sum. Um, typically in that, you know, six, you know, we've been using, uh, 6.9 million for a number of years. And this year we, at, we needed an additional $700,000 to, to reduce the tax burden. Um, uh, the levy portion that, uh, is raising additional funds. So that was just as a mech, that, that is a means to reduce the tax burden.
Okay. Um, yeah, I think we'll have, I would have some thought questions, but I won't take any more time on that. The last question then is on the debt issued by the city in the form of general bonds, um, general obligation or specific. Are these bonds that have been issued in recent years or maybe the most recent issuances, are they callable bonds? Um, and if not, why? Is there a, is there a, um, advisory to, to that issuance process?
I think every bond issuance we have out there, uh, has a callable option at some point in the, in the future. I don't know. I can't recite, um, what, what year with, with the respective issuances, when the call year is, callable year is, so.
Yeah.
Follow up.
Apologies. Yeah, I thought we saw, I thought in a recent issuance, the calling period was either nonexistent or foreign to the future. And my question would be, what are our other options to retire outstanding debt if we're in a lower rate environment? But, but if you're saying.
Doesn't have a call.
Yep.
It doesn't, if it doesn't have a call option, there, then it, it doesn't, it's not something we could actually refund or refinance. Um, that, that is the provision that triggers that, uh, allows for a municipality to, um, to retire those bonds early and then, uh, take advantage of the, the market, uh, rates that are out there.
Right. Yeah. So that's kind of what I was getting at.
They're lower, obviously.
Portion we might be able to, or are we looking at retiring based on?
We, but, um, we, we, we will be looking at this this year because I think there is one particular issuance out there that has a call option on it. Um, perhaps slash, next year, uh, I think that there might be, and that's what we're looking at.
Okay. I appreciate it. I know you're answering, uh, about line items in a 400-page document, and I really appreciate the time. So thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Filmet. Um, and I see Dennis Alaco, if we could promote him, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Alaco. I think you need to unmute yourself, Mr. Alaco.
There we go. Thank you. Um, just a quick question. With, uh, city revenues decreasing this year, and specifically looking at parking services budget, understanding, frankly, it's very easy to understand why their parking revenues would be down this year, considering everything that's transpired with the pandemic. However, moving forward beyond that and hoping that we resume some level of normalcy here in town. But the anticipated movement of the firehouse to the location, which I believe is now currently referred to as the, uh, out-of-town, uh, parking area. How will the loss of revenue relocating the fire department to the out-of-town or non-resident parking location? How will that impact parking services, which then ultimately will affect the, um, loss of revenue to the city itself?
Good question. Uh, actually, we're bearing the brunt of it this year, Mr. Alaco. Um, we are not anticipating any revenue from the, uh, non-resident, uh, which is the Broad Street East lot. Um, and, and unfortunately, fortunately, um, because of the pandemic, uh, that we, we just haven't been receiving any revenue. This is, oh, there's been some cars that have been parking, uh, in that lot, but we, we are anticipating zero. So the impact of, of, of us building the firehouse on that lot in future years will be zero because we've already built it into this budget.
Right. And, and I can understand that for, for this year. However, moving forward, I'm sure that the city or specifically parking services relied on that particular revenue generated from that particular lot, uh, in some way, shape or form. In, in years past, well, how, right, right. And I'm sure at, at a premium because I'm sure we were charging the out-of-towners more so than in-town residents.
Yep.
How, how are we recapturing or, or looking at different ways to generate revenue to make up for that loss?
Sure. So we were, we were actually contemplating that be, before the pandemic and, um, looking at options. And one, one option is to, uh, we were, we, we provided a valet service in that lot. And, uh, we think that we could use the Broad Street parking structure as a, as a place to, uh, valet cars for the non-residents. So that, that would be just additional revenues, uh, uh, funds to come in, in future years, uh, that we, we are currently not receiving. So I think there's only upside on this, Mr. Alaco. Uh, unfortunately, we've had to bear, um, a serious, you know, burden, uh, of that revenue loss, uh, last year and certainly this year. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alaco. Are there any other questions or comments from members of the public? I'm not seeing any answers. Are there any other questions from members of council? I'm not sure that Councilmember Naidu's question was fully answered about the pensions. Maybe we could circle back to that at this point.
I thought I'd answer it on January 1st, 2021.
Okay.
Uh, yes. So, um, uh, the, the, this year, so the, the pension, uh, amounts are determined by the state of New Jersey. And it's, uh, it's a pretty complicated actuarially, actuarial, uh, actuarial, uh, formula that determines all of the local government, uh, pension obligations in any given year. Uh, a number of factors go into it, uh, looking at asset value, market rate value, um, what the fund, the expected rate of return is, um, and, and how you meet that obligation. And, and also the, um, the local governments, uh, state, state has a portion of their fund of the public employee. This is just the public employee retirement system, which is one, one of the two major in the public, uh, police and fire retirement system, being the other, which is the, is double the size of the, um, PERS, uh, uh, fund. And so it's also the funding, this, you'll, you hear a lot about the state and how they're, they haven't been funding their 100% share. The state, uh, the, all the local governments are required to provide 100% of what their obligation, uh, is in any given year. Um, certainly salaries play into that, and it's usually, um, it's sort of a lagging number. It's a couple of years behind. Um, so if you, if the market, if their, the performance of their fund was down, uh, they, they have an expected return of, um, seven and a half percent, I think, is what they, the state of New Jersey looks to, expects in any given year to have a, a rate of return. So there's like smoothing out kind of formula that they use. Um, but ultimately, they, when they, they're, they're, they're allocating or basically stating as, stating to the local governments what their amounts are, there's a number of things that go into it. This year happened to be, um, uh, nine point, I think, 9.6%. Last year was point two, uh, one, I think. And then previous years were in that five to six percent range. I think about five percent has probably been the average over the last 10 years or so. Um, so this is definitely above average. Uh, so there's a number of factors go in. And I think this year is they're performing better, at least for the last, the fiscal year that they look at, which is July 1st to June, uh, June 30th. Um, they're having, having a much better performance year. Hopefully the funds reflect that and our, our, our pension obligations this year won't be as high. So, but we, we never know until the beginning. Um, well, actually, it's at the end of the year, we'll know. So, so I'm sorry. So Michael.
So, so, I'm sorry. So, Michael, just to simplify, and maybe I'm getting this wrong, but maybe it helps with the public listening. So essentially, I'm hearing this right, part of the reason that it's an increase this year versus the average is that it's a combination between salaries, what the state provides, and how the fund itself is doing vis a vis investments because we have a hundred percent obligation to fund it completely.
That, that's correct.
If there's a differential and a downfall in one of those, uh, well, the salaries can go up, so that will impact it.
Yeah.
But 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 if the, say, last year, the investments did badly, or what have you, we would have to make up that difference. And so therefore, we would see an increase in how we would need to contribute.
Right.
That.
Yeah, that that is. And and also the, between the two funds, I mean, so, uh, just so you know how it's funded. I mean, the the police and fire, uh, contribute, uh, ten percent of their employees contribute ten percent. The public employees, uh, all the other employees contribute, uh, seven and a half percent. And and there's the employer's responsibility of that obligation, uh, or what what the funding, which is for for P, PFRS is about twenty-six or twenty-seven percent. And and then the, um, uh, the PERS is about ten percent. So, and then the state has their funding, uh, requirements that go into the 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 PERS, uh, system. So there's the rate of return, there's, um, what the actual performance, what they, how they value the fund. There's a number of things that go into this. It's not an easy thing to understand. But bottom line is this, unfortunately, this year, we've, we saw a much larger increase that is typical over the last ten years.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, are there any other questions from members of council? I see none. I'll declare the hearing closed. And we will move on to ordinances for hearing. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please read ordinance for hearing number twenty-one thirty-two thirty-five?
Yes. An ordinance of the City of Summit in Union County, New Jersey, amending required exterior mechanical equipment setbacks in certain residential zones as established in Article, uh, fourteen, design and performance requirements of part two zoning of chapter thirty-five development regulations ordinance of the City of Summit.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Nidu?
Uh, thank you, Council President Pro Tem. So in your stead, I will introduce this ordinance for hearing. And this ordinance, what it essentially does is it changes back from what a change in the DRO occurred. Um, essentially, this is for a side yard setback in certain residential, uh, zones that had been, uh, five feet, uh, and had been changed to ten feet in the new DRO. But because of the number of variance requests that had come into the city staff, about fifteen to date, uh, with regard to air conditioners, this is limited to air conditioners. This is a request from the city staff, uh, to go back to the five feet. What would otherwise occur is essentially these folks would need to go and spend money and go to the zoning board and make a variance application request. And this is a way of trying to, uh, help those folks out basically and not have them have to make those, uh, variance requests. And in in light of the fact that the summer month is, uh, coming up. Uh, as a, as a general note, people should recognize typically what happens is at the end of a year, the zoning board looks at its, how many zoning requests, uh, variance requests it receives. And it seems, it seems like there is an area where of the DRO, where there's a number of different, uh, requests that are made. Then the zoning board makes a request to the planning board to change the DRO provisions, and then those changes are made. This is in a way because of, uh, how recent the DRO change was, given the fact that the summer months is coming. This is a way, and knowing that we have fifteen already variance, or would be variance request from the city staff. This is a recommendation of the city staff to, uh, change it back to the five feet. And with that, I introduce this, uh, ordinance for hearing.
Nice second. Are there any comments from members of council? I see none. Uh, I would just, um, echo what Councilmember Nidu said, um, that we have just introduced the whole, if if people that are watching from home, we just introduced a whole new DRO, um, late last year, which was a re- I think of all of our zoning ordinances. And in the process of doing that, there was this, um, we had changed the setback from the five to the ten to conform with some other side yard requirements. But clearly, that was a change that shouldn't have occurred because we then had so many variance requests. Um, and there is a quarterly review of the DRO as well as requests from the zoning board. But it was felt that we should do this in an expeditious manner since otherwise all these people would be forced to go to the zoning board to do their conditioning and as the summer's coming up, as as Councilmember Nidu said, it, we're doing it now. Um, so with that, are there any other comments, um, or comments from the public? Madam Clerk?
Um, Council President Pro Tem, I have one, um, email that was received for public hearing this evening, if I may.
Thank you.
Uh, this is from Christine Erdl. She does not, uh, provide her home address. Uh, she states, "I object to a proposed change from ten to five feet for air conditioner units. Exceptions should require a hearing so immediate neighbors impacted can comment. Five feet is too close for a uniform rule. This impacts noise levels, appearance, et cetera. Making no changes to placement of air conditioners is my vote." That is all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, I appreciate the comment. I will note that originally, um, it was five feet. It was recently just changed to ten feet. We're just changing it back to the original five feet, so hopefully that helps. Um, are there any other comments from members of council? Thank you. I will now declare the hearing closed. Um, and at this point, um, Madam Clerk, can you please read the title, um, of the ordinance for final consideration?
Yes. An ordinance of the City of Summit in Union County, New Jersey, amending required exterior mechanical equipment setbacks in certain residential zones as established in Article fourteen, design and performance requirements of part two zoning of chapter thirty-five development regulations.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Nidu?
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. As per our hearing right now, I would ask that we take a vote on and approve this ordinance.
Thank you. Nice second. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Mr. Nidu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Little?
Aye.
Motion carries. So we are now moving into resolutions, um, and the first resolutions are finance. Um, I do want to just reiterate what was stated at the beginning of the meeting, and that is that because due to the fact that the state has not yet assigned a reviewer to look over some proposed budget, um, we are changing the agenda tonight, and we will not be taking a vote on the budget. Um, and that will necessitate some changes to the agenda as well as some, um, resolutions that are going to be made from the floor. So I just want to explain procedurally what's going on before I turn it over to Councilmember Vartan for the finance resolutions.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. So the first one is seven eight, seven three. This resolution sets forth the summary of twenty twenty-one revenues and appropriations for the municipal operating budget, sewer utility budget, and parking utility budget. As explained earlier, this is pending review and approval by the State of New Jersey's Division of Local Government Services. So therefore, I move to table this resolution until the June first, twenty twenty-one, councilmate.
I second it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we need a roll call, um, on the, on the tabling of the motion, or can we do?
I believe, just to safeguard that, I would, I would recommend it, yes.
Okay, can we please have a roll call vote then?
Yes. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Mr. Nidu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Little?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. The second one is number seven eight seven five. This resolution authorizes the schedule of school levy payments for July through December, twenty twenty-one. Uh, the amount of five million, seven hundred, eight thousand, eight hundred ninety-six dollars is to be paid on the first of each month or the closest business day thereafter, uh, from July to December. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Any comment from members of council? Any comment from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Hey, go ahead, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. This resolution is number seven eight, seven six, and it authorizes the tax collector to distribute the estimated tax bills for the third quarter in twenty twenty-one. Uh, I want to emphasize that these bills are estimated. Uh, the reason we can't say, we know exactly what your tax bill will be, is this. Uh, the county and state of New Jersey have yet to certify their rates, so I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Seeing none, and all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. This one is number seven eight five eight. This resolution authorizes the renewal of Summit's membership in the Morris County Cooperative Pricing Council. This is one of many cooperative pricing groups with which the city is affiliated. I, it helps to get better pricing on various projects and service products and services. Uh, this agreement renews our membership for the next five years until September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments from members of council? And any comments from members of the public? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Carries. Go ahead, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. This is number seven eight six two. This resolution authorizes a three-month contract extension for payroll, HR, and time and attendance services from July first to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, with Prime Point LLC. The city is in the process of combining these related services into one new contract. Due to the timing, we're going to extend the existing contract until the end of the third quarter so that we can, we can make a clear distinction between the current vendor and a potential new vendor, uh, at the time of a new quarter. So I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. And you have, um, some resolutions from the floor as well, Councilmember Vartan?
I have three from the floor. Sorry, everyone, hoping I was done.
You can just-
Resolution.
Go ahead with this.
Number, number one from the floor, uh, this resolution authorizes the emergency appropriation of funds to the temporary operating budget. This adds two hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred dollars. And again, uh, this is a funding mechanism, uh, to keep the government functioning until the budget is adopted. Uh, this resolution is being introduced from the floor because we were hoping to adopt the budget tonight. Uh, but as we've discussed several times now, we're not going to be doing that. So I'm hoping this will be the last time we have to do it, and I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, I was, um, Madam President, that we have to take a roll call?
Oh, we do have to take a roll call vote. Do we need to take a roll call vote on all three, um, floor resolutions? Okay, can we please have a roll about that? Thank you.
Yes. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Mr. Nidu?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Little?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, the second one from the floor. Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. Uh, this resolution authorizes emergency appropriation of funds to the UCC budget, uh, in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Like the last resolution, uh, this is a funding mechanism until the final budget is adopted. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Can we please have a roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Mr. Nidu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Little?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, the third and final resolution from the floor from finance. Uh, this resolution authorizes emergency appropriation of funds to the parking utility budget in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Uh, this is similar to the last two, and I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Madam Clerk, can we please have the roll call?
Yes. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Mr. Nidu?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Little?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I think that does it for finance. Is that correct?
Yes.
We'll move on to capital projects and community services. Councilmember Nidu?
Thank you, Council President, uh, Pro Tem. The first, uh, resolution was regard to the submission, authorizing the submittal of the recycled tonnage report. Every year, uh, we need to submit such a report. It needs to be done by June fifteenth. The state provides funding, uh, to municipalities, uh, for recycling, and typically Summit gets about thirty thousand dollars. And so I ask for, uh, approval for submission of this recycling tonnage report.
Nice second. Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead, Councilmember Nidu.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. The second resolution is a really simple one and a good one. It's with regard to our sanitary sewer cleaning and TB contract with a change order that will decrease the contract amount by four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-five cents, or a ten percent decrease in the cost. And with that, I author, I I would request that we approve this change order.
And I happily second. These are my favorite resolutions. From members of council. Any from members of public? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those in opposed? Motion carries. Okay, uh, now we're on to community programs and parking services. Councilmember O'Sullivan?
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. This is ID number seven eight seven zero to authorize the extension of a license agreement with Atlantic Health Systems Hospital Corporation Overlook Medical Center to use the community Summit Community Center as temporary COVID nineteen vaccination clinic. At our February second council meeting, we agreed to partner with Atlantic Health to allow the use of our community center for the distribution of the COVID nineteen vaccine until June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Since February fifth, Atlantic Health has administered over thirty-one thousand vaccines at our community center. And recently, the FDA authorized the Pfizer vaccine for people twelve to fifteen years old. Atlantic Health is anticipating an increased demand for vaccinations. So to support this ongoing effort to vaccinate as many people as we can, Atlantic Health is respectfully asking permission to use the community center as vaccination site until September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Atlantic Health truly appreciates the opportunity to partner with the City of Summit to make sure our community is vaccinated in a safe and convenient manner. I want to thank Director Azarovsky and his team for their ongoing flexibility to make this happen and at the same time, provide the community programs that we have come to expect. I ask that we move this resolution.
Nice second. Any comments from members of council? I'll just say, um, you know, working on the community programs committee this year, this has just been a tremendous community partnership. Uh, you, you know, this is, this is what it's all about. It's government and private working together. And I think this, um, partnership is a big reason of why we have such high vaccination rates in the city and why we, um, are coming out, um, with much better news about rates of infection and hospitalization, everything else. I talked about at the beginning of the meeting. So, uh, I want to just echo the thanks to Director Azarovsky and the staff. They've, they've done a great job working together and making sure that this partnership is as, as successful as it has been. So I really want to thank you. Um, this has been great. So this is, I would enthusiastically support this. Are there any other comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead, Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. With your permission, I would like to bundle the next two resolutions.
Absolutely.
Okay, this is, uh, for ID number seven eight six nine to accept a donation from the Summit Boosters Association for the-
to accept the donation from the Summit Boosters Association for the Memorial Tennis Courts for two thousand dollars. And this is also ID number seven eight six eight to accept the donation from the Summit Tennis Association for our Memorial Tennis Courts for two thousand dollars. Summit High School Boosters and the Summit Tennis Association have each donated two thousand dollars to the Department of Community Programs to assist towards the purchase of new tennis wind screens at the Memorial Tennis Courts. Over a number of years, the city has been purchasing generic wind screens because they were cheap. Well, you get what you pay for. During periods of heavy winds, the screens are torn and become unattached and end up looking really tattered. Director Azarovsky met with the Summit Tennis Association, the Summit High School Athletic Director, and the DCS Parks Foreman to discuss alternatives. And after committee discussions, we decided to upgrade the Memorial Court wind screens to the Court Master Elite custom screens from Hard True Sports, which is a very reputable company within the tennis community. Shaughnessy Sports Construction, which is a certified tennis court builder, will do the installation. These are the highest quality and most resilient wind screens offered by Court Master Elite, and they come with a five-year warranty. The total cost for the wind screens is seven thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars. We want to thank the Summit Tennis Association and the Summit High School Boosters for their generous donations, which are covering more than half of the total cost of the screens. I ask that we move this resolution.
Nice second. Are there any comments from members of council? Yes, Councilmember Naidoo?
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. Uh, I join in thanking the boosters and the Summit Tennis Association. Uh, certainly those courts, as a tennis player, I will tell you, hun, whether like we've had recently, those courts, the courts in Tatlock are completely packed with people, and, and it's wonderful. I, I do want to ask a question to Mark, though. My recollection is that we were going to redo those courts, Mark, or my misremembering. Uh, is my, am I getting too old here and forgetting things here?
For you, uh, Council President Pro Tem Little. Um, Councilman Naidoo, we, um, painted them two years ago. So we're not.
Got it. Clearly, my mind is really slipping here. Okay. Yes, okay, good, all right. Because that, yeah, because definitely those courts get plenty, plenty of use. So thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
As a fellow tennis player, neither of the courts, the Tatler courts, were, and they, they needed it and were, uh, they've been in great shape. So thank you to, um, Director Azarovsky. Um, and the wind screens will be very welcome, and we, we absolutely appreciate the, the donations by the boosters and Summit Tennis Association, and another great partnership. Uh, are there any other comments from members of council? Yes, Councilmember Barton?
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. Just a quick question, and maybe Councilman O'Sullivan mentioned it, and I missed it. Um, when, when would these be expected to be installed?
Well, the purchase, w- once they're approved, hopefully they are with this vote, uh, and, and Mark has the direction. Um, the, the order will go in, and they will probably be, uh, weeks away, maybe a couple of months they'll be installed, but definitely for the following seasons.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Any questions from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we have one resolution from the Safety and Health Committee, uh, Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. Uh, I am pleased to offer the resolution ID number seven nine, seven eight nine zero to authorize submission of the Gary Sinise Foundation First Responders Grants Program Grant Application and to execute, uh, the grant agreement. This application is for emergency relief training and essential equipment for the first responders, and it's in the amount of twenty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. I, uh, request that we accept the, uh, adopt this resolution to submit this application.
I second.
Any comments by members of council? Any from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we are now at the, um, consent agenda part of the evening. And unless there's an objection, we will take all the consent agenda items together. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you. All, anyone, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda carries. Um, now on to council member comments and new business. Is there any council member comments? Councilmember Barton?
Thank you, Council President. Um, and I know I've talked a lot tonight. Um, it is, it is National EMS Week, and I wanted to try and, uh, take a minute to describe to people what it was like, uh, what it has been like being an EMT in Summit this last year. Uh, I was having a tough time finding the words for exactly how things have changed. Uh, but then I thought we were really doing the same things, providing the same services, uh, but delivering those services became drastically more difficult. Uh, so some EMS still covered every minute and every hour of the day and night. But instead of enjoying the company of crewmates, members wore masks and sat in separate rooms and far apart from one another. Uh, some EMS still responded to thousands of calls, but did so wearing much more protective equipment because any of those calls could have made members sick, cause an outbreak, or worse. Some EMS still carried patients up and down flights of stairs, battled the elements, uh, but did so in sweaty Tyvek suits and breathing hard through respirator masks. Some EMS still took patients to the hospital that best fit their needs, but often had to sit outside for hours while space was found. Some EMS still fights valiantly against suffering and death, but suffering and death have been much more common. I tell you these things precisely because none of it stopped the job from getting done. And there's not a single member of some EMS who would complain about any of it. There's not a single member of some EMS who's been paid for their time or for the ways that they sacrifice their bodies and their minds to put themselves in harm's way for the people of this wonderful City of Summit. So in this week, and I hope every day, this extraordinary group, the most selfless people I have known, uh, are deserving of our sincere gratitude, our admiration, and our support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, that's very well said. And when I saw that this week was the EMS week, I certainly thought of you and all the other members of the EMS squad. We are so unbelievably lucky here in Summit. These are volunteers. They put so much time and effort in training into serving our community. And during this past year, it, their sacrifice and their generosity to all of us is, is really beyond words. Thank them. And so I, we all owe you an enormous debt of gratitude, um, to you personally, Councilmember Barton, and to all the, your fellow members on the squad. Um, and there really are no words. So I'll leave the applause. We were in chambers. I wish we could do this in person. But thank you so much. Are there any other new comments or new business? Okay, uh, and that will do it for tonight. Thank you, everyone. Um, thank you for being patient with me as I ran my first meeting. Uh, I appreciate it. I appreciate it very much. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Well done.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night.